We're now called the May 5th, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to Order. Welcome to the Municipal Annex. We have two Scout troops with us tonight, Troop 605 and 763. We're going to ask you to come down to the front and at the appropriate time, when I turn around and look at you and point at you, you will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, let us stand and you can start making your way down, Troops 605 and 763. What we will do is we will pause for a moment of silence and then the Scout troops will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Not yet, I will cue you in when, okay? Right now, we got a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Scout troops 605 and 763. Now, from which, where do you, what, where are you from? Do you both go to the same church or wherever you meet?
We are from Chapel Hill Church.
Chapel Hill? Where's the other one?
Uh, we're in Los Angeles.
Okay, good, good. Well, thank you for coming tonight and we invite you to come back and be with us at another time. Next, we have the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled, if not, I accept a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Lebsy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Colt Pepper.
Aye.
Those microphones are really working well tonight, aren't they?
We're working on the case.
Well, yeah, yeah, for those that don't know, this is our third meeting in the Municipal Annex and each time, we make improvements. And within eighteen months, we'll be back to our regular home with the Public Safety Building. If you've been by there, they're making a lot of progress. The CYU building is just about totally down, the water tower came down and I think this week sometime, they're going to start building the, digging for the basement for the, the new expansion part of it. So, anyway, they're making progress and I'm kind of anxious. Next, we have a presentation on the St. Jude's Dream Home. Julie, you're going to come and make that presentation? I can tell you, at least once a week, I drive down and check the progress on my new house.
Well, hello everyone, thank you so much for inviting us to be here tonight. My name is Jackie Kazner and I work for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. Also want to introduce to other people who are here tonight, Alison Thompson, who also works for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, and Megan Fratzke, who works for Summit Custom Homes, who will speak a little bit in the next few minutes. So, just want to introduce you all a little bit to what we're doing here in Blue Springs to raise money for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. We're incredibly proud and excited about this project and to be here in the community in 2014. So, a little bit about St. Jude before we get started. So, St. Jude was founded in 1962 by the late entertainer Danny Thomas. Danny Thomas had a dream to help children and make sure that we find cures for deadly diseases such as cancer. So, with the opening of the hospital in 1962, children from around the world have visited St. Jude for treatment of cancer and other deadly diseases. St. Jude definitely pioneered the concept of bench to bedside, meaning that our researchers, our doctors and our patients are all in one building, so those children can get the best treatment possible for them. So, St. Jude has treated children from all fifty states, including local children here from the Kansas City area. St. Jude's the only pediatric cancer research center where families never pay for anything. So, that means their housing, their food, their travel, their lodging, that way these families can just make sure their child gets better and they can really focus on what's needed. The daily operating cost for St. Jude is 1.9 million dollars, so that is why we are out in our communities raising money each and every day for this organization, because we want to make sure we can fulfill Danny's promise that no child will die from cancer or any other deadly diseases, as well as taking the burden of those costs off the families. So, St. Jude shares its protocols with around the world and with doctors and researchers, we want to make sure that one child saved means thousands more around the world. So, right here with Children's Mercy, we also have twenty-one affiliate clinics in fifteen different countries, the most recent one opening in Haiti. So, we want to make sure we can share our protocols and our findings to make sure that children have the ability to get better, no matter where they live. So, St. Jude, again, amazing, incredible center of excellence for cancer, its research is shared throughout the world. Our research facility, our faculty and our doctors include a Nobel Peace Prize winner, which we're incredibly proud of and of course, our research is shared through international outreach programs, so we can make sure that no child ever has to face this disease. Since St. Jude opened in 1962, the overall survival rate of childhood cancer has gone from twenty to eighty percent, and again, that's because of the work done by our doctors and researchers there in Memphis. So, a little bit more about the St. Jude Dream Home. So, this is our largest fundraiser here in the Kansas City area. The Dream Home started back in 1991 by a doctor in Louisiana who saw that there was a need to raise more money for the hospital, so came up with this concept. We are proud that we have over thirty markets around the country who participate in the Dream Home campaign. Since 2005, we've had a Dream Home here in Kansas City, this will be our ninth year and our fourth year partnered with Summit Custom Homes, as well as our first year here in Blue Springs, so excited to be a part of the community in this way. So, this campaign includes a lot of different components, but one of the biggest things is a marketing strategy and campaign, which I really work on, to make sure we let the community know what we're doing and how they can be a part of this project. So, we have some incredible partners here in Kansas City, including KFKF, Casey Star, Casey Home and Garden, Dos Mundos and Reyes Media Group, who's the Hispanic media group here in the Kansas City area as well. So, just a little bit of a timeline for you, so this project. So, the project kicked off in January 2014 with the groundbreaking of the new home. The home is a six-bedroom, five-and-a-half bath, over a half-million-dollar home that will be raffled off in October to one lucky winner. So, Summit Custom Homes officially broke ground in January and was able to talk to their vendors and subs about getting all of the product and time donated, which I'm sure Megan will touch on more. Coming up, the end of May, which we invite you all to come out, is our floor signing event, which is a really neat event, where we bring in our sponsors and our partners of St. Jude, as well as our patient families to write well wishes to the homes. So, signing the floor and really kind of connecting to the mission, what this is all about. June 11th, a big day, tickets go on sale for this year's St. Jude Dream Home. We have partnered with Blue Springs Harley-Davidson, who will be giving away a motorcycle for anyone that purchases their tickets between June 11th and June 15th, right there on Father's Day, they have the opportunity to win a motorcycle, as well as some of our other prizes. So, we are thrilled to have them involved here in the local community, as well as on July 25th, anyone who purchases their ticket before that date will be entered in to win a new car from Willy Chevrolet. August 23rd is our grand opening of the house, so this is when we invite the public out to see this incredible Dream Home. So, these are free tours where people can come and visit, as well as whenever people visit the house, they can be entered in to win a $10,000 furniture shopping spree, sponsored by Crowley Furniture. Doesn't cost them a dime, this is one thing that they don't have to pay for, we just invite them to come out to the house, see the work that's been done, as well as register for the prize. We do have a bonus prize, so anyone who purchases their ticket by August 25th, they'll have the opportunity to be entered in to win a $10,000 Visa gift card, as well as finally, the house. So, the house will be given away on October 12th on KSHB 41 Action News at the ten o'clock news, and we cap the raffle at 7,500 tickets, so this project alone will raise over $750,000 for the kids of St. Jude, incredible, incredible amount of money. So, that's a little bit about the Dream Home, would like to invite Megan and Kyle up, if they'd like to speak more about what Summit's doing.
My name is Megan Fratzke, I do the marketing for Summit Custom Homes. Thank you so much for having us, we're so excited to be here. As Jackie just explained, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital is an amazing organization and we're, Summit Custom Homes is honored to be able to, to build the home and to be able to contribute so greatly to the organization. We have really, our company as a whole has really embraced St. Jude and all that it means and we, I mean, it's, it's on our business cards, we, you know, we have the St. Jude logo on our business cards, on the backs of our shirts and everywhere, so it's just a huge part of what we do, so we're just really excited about it. This is our fourth year building the Dream Home and we, it's a huge project. We build the home for, at zero, net zero, so, which means everything is donated, from the foundation to the roof, I mean, it's all completely donated. And because it is such a huge project, we share our excitement with our vendors and they get really excited about it, you know, it takes, it's a good thing they get excited about it, because they donate a lot of money and time and hope, so. But it, because it is such a huge project, we need all the support we can get and, you know, it takes a lot to market this kind of a project, we have to sell 7,500 tickets, so just all the help that we can get with marketing would be great. Do you want to cover some of?
Sure.
This is a, okay.
Hello, Mr. Miller and Council, to excuse my timeframe in between attending meetings between a couple blocks down and now, so you guys are growing as well, it's a pretty neat deal at expanding the building over there, so. As, as discussed, we have, this is our fourth year undertaking with the St. Jude Home. Megan said, we're, we are, you know, very proud and honored to be able to support St. Jude and, you know, being able to put it in Blue Springs is, is a definite benefit for the city of Blue Springs and the community. I know Raymore, they somewhat were embraced it, I thought, but I know that, I know that Blue Springs is capable of embracing it much, much more than what Raymore did and they, it was in the Creekmore subdivision, if anyone's familiar with that part of Raymore and nice golf community and everything, but I think they can contribute a lot of the growth in that community to having the St. Jude home built in their community and people come out there to look at that home and they're like, oh wow, this is a nice place, I want to build a home here too. So, there's, there's a lot of residual benefits, other than just the kids, ultimately it is for the kids, we all understand that, but for the city of Blue Springs, there's a lot of residual benefits that, that will come with having the home in, in the city limits of Blue Springs. A few quick stats, since I know a lot of people like statistics and you can wrap, wrap your head around that, around that a little bit. Just company-wide for Summit Custom Homes, from, I'll go, I'll start from years ago, in 2008, we had two closings in the city of Blue Springs. Fast forward to 2014, we've already had fourteen this year and expect to have over thirty. I'm not a super duper math guru, but that's a pretty big percentage increase from 2008 to 2014. And in between there, we've gone from two to sixteen in 2012, twenty-one last year, and like I said, we'll be over, expect over thirty closes this year. So, again, the activity in the south part of town where most of our homes are being built, and that's where the St. Jude is, home is going to be as well, and the shores at Lakeside, or shores at Chapman Farms, that's just further going to, I think, benefit the south part of town. Some other little tidbit, which I think we've already hit on, was, you know, the goal to raise over $750,000 and I will expand a little bit on what Megan said on the time and materials, everything that's donated from our trade partners, our suppliers and all their employees, they, they do get behind it and they, they do embrace it and, you know, a lot of times they'll be, as an example, electrician, I think he sent eight or ten guys out there and had it knocked down a day and a half on a weekend. So, it's not just that it's during normal, what we consider normal business hours for construction, they do take time out of their weekends as well and donate their, their time and, and put a lot of sweat equity in as well. So, they, they do take pride in it, we have a floor signing that a lot of the actual employees that do work on the house, they do actually come back out and, and sign the floor, like I said, they, they take pride and, you know, donate their time and building a good home for, for one, for one lucky winner. So, I just, I know, I, I just really reiterate again that this will be an excellent thing for Blue Springs to, to be a part of. I think everyone in this room understands that, that businesses do like to do businesses, do business with others that are charitable and, you know, we, St. Jude is not the only thing that Summit participates in, but it obviously is the largest charity that we, we contribute to, we do, we have Harvesters, we participate in some different things over at the Drum Farm over Independence, so we do, you know, we try to, you know, spread out a little bit and, and do what we can with other, with other charities around, around town, so. Appreciate any, you know, if you guys come up with ideas on how we can further market and spread the word about St. Jude, I, I think there's somebody in the room that maybe has, has a contact at a radio station that, I know that you guys do a ton anyhow, but had to put that plug in there now, Dale. No, in all seriousness, if you guys have any ideas on how we can improve our website, you know, anything that we can do that, that you guys think would help out, we're, we're all ears and, you know, there's no, no bad ideas as far as I'm concerned, so, do appreciate the time.
Well, I appreciate you all being here and if you can't tell, Kyle is homegrown. So, he understands, he understands Blue Springs and how Blue Springs embraces things that are a benefit to, to mankind and humankind, however you want to phrase it. So, we appreciate you being here and we certainly support it. We know that there is a council member that totally embraces St. Jude's and it might be a voice that's on the radio, and I think when we have the kickoff, he's going to be doing a show right here in Blue Springs, is he going to do it here in Blue Springs? And, and, and the person that buys the first ticket is going to win the house. And the person that's going to buy the first ticket has already been determined that it's going to be the mayor. Okay, want to make sure we get all this stuff.
That's what I hear.
Did you, have something you want to add?
Yeah, may I add some things? Very near and dear to my heart, Your Honor. I've been involved with St. Jude since 1992, brought it to Kansas City when I came to KFKF in 1995. Between the Dream Home and the radio thons we do on the radio station, I believe the number's 11 million dollars since 1995 that we've been involved in helping to raise. And just some background on St. Jude, for those who may not know, it's in Memphis, but it was born in Kansas City. Danny Thomas collaborating with the Lebanese restaurant community in Kansas City, that's where the discussions for St. Jude began, so it was really born in Kansas City. As far as the Dream Home goes, Kyle, every year, I go to that Dream Home and I, and there's an oh wow factor, it's like, I can't believe they came up with this, I can't wait to see what the oh wow factor is in Blue Springs. And I'm glad it's going to be there, because we do a lot with the home and I won't have to drive to Raymore anymore. And that's only like a thirty mile an hour zone through there to get to the house and, yeah, I've gotten stopped a time or two. But last year in particular, the walk-in closet off the master suite, you know, my wife was ready to move in. So, when the mayor wins the house and moves there, I don't know if you want to talk about what the oh wow factor might be this year, or you want to wait until we see it?
I think we all like surprises, right?
Yeah.
No, it, our, our designer, Darrell, he, I mean, every day I see him, he's like, what do you, he's always, you know, bouncing stuff off of different people that he, you know, us guys are out in the field a lot and asks us our opinion and everything, but it'll, it'll be, I'm sure, better than what you've seen in the past.
Well, we're glad that you're here in Blue Springs and the traffic alone that will go down to District Three, where we want to grow on the south side of town, it's going to be really impressive, really incredible, you know, to, to get people down there to see what we have to offer here in Blue Springs, so I am just, I'm thrilled beyond words that you guys are here.
Any other council members? Like to make any comments? Well, not, thank you for coming, Jackie, we appreciate you coming back, we met about three weeks ago and I'm sure we'll be seeing you a lot over the next few months. And cert, we, we will all get out and promote this as much as we can, I've got the Mayor's newsletter and there's just a number of venues and opportunities we'll have to let people know about it. Anybody? Okay, well, thank you again for coming.
And like, like Jackie said, we are having that floor signing, do you have, do you have an email address?
Yes.
Okay, I will, yeah, I will send that to you guys, you are all more than welcome to come and you can sign your well wishes, your names, whatever you want, on the Dream Home floor, so, we would love for you to be there. Thank you so much for having us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to a adoption of a resolution supporting the Kansas City St. Jude's Dream Home giveaway in Blue Springs.
May I introduce it, Your Honor?
You can introduce it and you can also make a motion for the approval of the resolution.
Is that all it requires? Just a motion?
That's it.
And I move for the motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Polls same same, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a discussion on a community development block grant, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the time of year, as you're all accustomed to by this point, that we start our discussions of potential projects as we move forward with the development and adoption of the annual action plan as it relates to community development block grant funds that the city's entitled to as an entitlement community. We have provided a list of kind of our top ten, so to speak, that we'd like to kind of just throw out there to get the discussion started. We don't have a lot of specifics identified to them or even dollar amounts at this point, but we just want to make sure that we're kind of on the right track and see if there's anything that kind of raises any red flags or, or sparks any interest. Our HUD planner, so to speak, is Mike Peterman, our principal planner, and he's here as well, if there are any specific questions. We did meet with Public Works, Chris Sandy, as well as Parks and Recreation Department and that, with Dennis Dovell, so we've, we've kind of gone through some of their, their wish list items as well, and that's what we see here before you this evening. So, just walking through those real quickly, first three are related to kind of park development, park kind of enhancement and park, I guess, I guess redevelopment as well. Central Park, as you know, that's where the, the historic train depot is located, Community Garden, there's some opportunities for some additional amenities related to that to be utilized through, with community development block grant funds. Baumgartner as well, you know, there are some sidewalks and access points that were already installed with CDPG funds in previous years, so there's some opportunities for some additional enhancements there as well. Grounds Park, believe it or not, is actually located in one of our low to moderate income areas and has some opportunities as well, again, it's more of a, you know, citywide amenity, but, you know, certain amenities can be discussed that are related more of a neighborhood scale for that park. Of course, as you know, a lot of funds have been identified and committed to downtown. Let's be looking at downtown infrastructure, some possible sidewalk and ADA upgrades, Downtown Alive, $5,000 for the last two years, I believe, been given to Downtown Alive, they've come forward and are requesting consideration to look at moving that to a $10,000 amount, so that's something we could identify as a specific dollar amount at this point. Down, Community Services League, again, they've shown some interest, particularly, again, their headquarters in Independence, they do receive some funds in other communities, so that's one kind of nonprofit group that we could certainly look at supporting as well. That certainly would help us in meeting some of the goals of the consolidated plan to look at helping the homeless population, the lower-income population, and that's an opportunity we can certainly look at with this year's funds. Downtown facade improvement, there's certainly opportunity there to kind of carry the momentum from the bank and it's a remodel that we've all seen there in the corner of 11th and Main. Mine Home Repair Program, First Time Home Buyer's Program, we're several years into both of those and both are very successful. We have a waiting list right now for Mine Home Repair Program and we will be looking at, I say opening that up, but addressing some of those on the waiting list here even later this year with existing funds, so that's turning into more of a continuous rolling opportunity for folks to apply for that. And then, of course, some administration funds, just to help with some administrative costs for, you know, recording, processing, staff time, things of that sort. So, that's kind of my opening remarks and certainly willing to take any feedback or input you might have at this point.
This is the initial meeting and, and we will go through, I think August 4th is when we have to have the final plan adopted.
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilman Lebsy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Allen, I, I think I even heard a comment up here with the amendment we had to make last year and, and with the process here, it seems like we're continually talking about this, so I know every month, we're having a CDPG discussion, but I appreciate what you've got here, I think it does kind of reflect what we've talked about a lot in the past, is heavy on the infrastructure, specifically in the downtown area, but one comment I did want to make on the park development, I know in the past, we've done some discussion about the, using these funds for the addition of maybe some ADA-compatible park equipment, was, has there been any additional research to see if that's something that these funds would support?
I'm going to make him speak.
Yes, the, the improvements we did to Blue Springs Park, five or six years ago, were, included ADA improvements. The things with parks is that they have to be a neighborhood park and it can be very specific to, you know, ADA improvements to the playground equipment, so, once you start talking about parks, it's very limited in what, the scope of what it is that we can do and the location of that park.
Do any of the parks in the CDPG district fit that requirement?
Baumgartner Park, Central Park and Blue Springs Park are really the ones that really are in the areas that we can expend funding. Grounds Park is in a different, in a exception criteria, but it's, it's also.
And it doesn't currently have any equipment anyway, does it? Grounds or, okay. Well, I think that's something, at least I personally would like to continue to look at, I know we've had some discussion with some residents that have reflected a, a need in our community that there really isn't any park equipment that is handicap accessible or ADA compliant that allows for, for that group to be served, so I think that's something to continue to look at and may be worth incorporating in this year's CDPG if possible.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Your Councilman Edmondson?
And I know in the past, we've had an issue where we weren't able to get everything completed in the time and we, and we suffered by losing some funds and, and I, hopefully, we can look at it to where maybe we can come up with a plan, or you've already thought about that, coming up with a plan to where you have, if, if something's getting held up and it's not going to get completed, maybe we have another project sitting off to the side that could slide in and we could qualify those funds for, to where we're not losing those funds the next time around. It'd be nice, you know, if they offer that, let's take full advantage of it and not lose anything in the process.
Certainly, we can certainly look at opportunities for that. Again, hopefully with, with ten different items here, there are certainly more projects than funds at this point, so, yeah, I was appreciating any kind of a prioritization we could get from the council as we move forward.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Carter? Oh, Councilman.
Yes, I guess my concerns are similar to last year, these are public funds dedicated to low-income families, I prefer that they go to the, to the public versus private business, especially for private business. And I, there's, there's a lot of good things on here, I think the public's money should stay with the public.
Councilman Carter?
Along those lines, how far down line are we on this facade program and are we committed to it, or is that a year-to-year thing?
It's definitely a year-to-year thing. I think it was two or three years ago is when we approved for the bank facade and then last year's program, we approved $15,000 for smaller, three-to-five-thousand-dollar grants that haven't been taken advantage of, we've had different discussions with different groups on Main Street, but nobody has used that $15,000 yet.
So, where's, is it sitting in an account?
Yes, it's just sitting there, waiting to be used, so, and those are some of the funds that we've identified, maybe later on the summer, for the Minor Home Repair Program to address the waiting list. for the minor home repair program to address the waiting list.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We'll be back, I think, next meeting?
Yeah, we'll probably do four or five meetings in a row.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Next, we have a discussion on the Missouri Innovation Park. Mr. Starner. And also, Ms. Essman, you're going to join him in that? You're just here to back him up, huh? You're to support him, all right.
Mayor, members of the council, I have some material that I'm going to make available after I speak to you. I was in front of you on March 13th and at that point, both the Board of Missouri Innovation Park, Inc. and Blue Springs EDC had asked for input from city council on what you wanted to do in moving forward with the innovation park. And what we've done since then is held a series of meetings and part of that process was coming out of that meeting with recommendations in the form of resolutions that come from both boards, giving some direction to council to consider. And if I could take a look at my material here. I'll go ahead and make available the scope of services, which is specific to what the two boards are asking council consideration. We've done a bit of an update. You can always count on us giving a lot of material, so I apologize for what you have in front of you, but most of you have seen this at one time or another. The EDC and the city held a joint board retreat discussing as a focal point what we do at the innovation park, and I'm going to be very brief and summarize. Coming out of that meeting, the purpose of the group that did the facilitation, Moore Partners, was to gain a consensus from the stakeholders in this community of what do we do with and without MU participating as an anchor tenant in the park. And as all of you know, probably with some frustration, Mizzou decided to go forward on an alternative path for building out their program in Kansas City. Now, I'm still working with them in terms of Mizzou Center and the University of Missouri Extension Office, but specific to building a building, acting as an attract at the tenants in that park, we don't have that on the table today. So the boards of both organizations really felt it was important, looking at this asset that the city has already invested in, to take some sense of stock of what do we do now that MU has decided not to move forward where so much of our strategy the last four or five years was directed. And in essence, Moore Partners has put forth a proposal, I've been working with Eric and both boards, to gain some sense of clarity as to what would we do in putting focus and attention on the park. And if I were to summarize, you have four or five pages there of the Moore Partner proposal. It's really taking budgeted marketing funds that were set aside, I want to say, at least a year ago, maybe even two. They're waiting to be used and it's premature to do anything with them from a marketing standpoint until we really know what it is that is the best use for that park. Now, interestingly enough, and to our benefit, we have three local expanding companies that I've been working with. And as of last week, their timelines are even getting shorter. I have until September with one company to make a decision on what possible location we could cite them in. And this is a company looking at building 150,000 square foot manufacturing and warehouse center. Right now, there is not an available site that's ready to go or shovel-ready, as you'll hear me use the term. We have a second project that we've been working with that has now come forward and that's even bigger. We have a third project that we've been all paying attention to and that's the Excelligent expansion. Each of those businesses, at this point, do not have a ready and available site in Blue Springs. So the intent with the Moore Partners proposal is to help re-Q us, update the information that we've already worked on and fine-tune it and account for what happens without Mizzou in this consideration. And some of this is trueing up to the marketplace. What type of activity, what type of opportunity, what sensibilities does the community, the council, planning commission members and staff have towards how we want to design and lay out this park? And really, the most important part is, is the city willing and committed to go forward with the development, particularly given the direction you gave me about three months ago, go bring me a deal. Now we have three. So I would ask your consideration. I'd like to come back at the next available council meeting if it's your choice to move forward, seeking funds that would help us to move forward through the Missouri Innovation Park in a contract with Moore Partners. And really what they're going to leave us with is an opportunity to bring Trainer Confluence, which is our architect and land planning group, as well as Olson Engineering, all three participated up to this point. And what we've done with the innovation park, we have a small gap to close in terms of preparing the park, entitling it, so that we can actually pull a permit and allow development to take place. But we are several steps away from being able to do that.
Are there any questions? Councilman Levysey?
I don't have a question, but I had some comments to make in regards to this. I was able to attend the joint meeting we had with Moore Partners and I'm currently the liaison to the Economic Development Corporation. So I've been able to be a part of these conversations and I know I have been personally interested in this since Mizzou, especially that deal kind of went away. So I've had a lot of discussions with Mr. Starner and with Chairman Essman and with city staff about kind of making sure we're on track with the future of Missouri Innovation Park, because I don't want to see this just fall apart for lack of a plan. And so that's what I appreciate about this Moore Partners scope here is that it actually gives us a tangible plan, is something I think we've been missing largely even when Mizzou was a part of the deal. And so I'm supportive of this. As you guys will see from this resolution, the EDC board has voted to support this plan. And I think it's just a good business and I think that's where this really takes us in the way of Missouri Innovation Park, to take care of businesses that already exist in Blue Springs. We're going to have a very tough time attracting quality businesses of the caliber that we're wanting to locate in Missouri Innovation Park. If we're not doing what we can to take care of the longstanding businesses in our community and especially to the more recent one of Excelligent, who is looking for a place to expand and they're already existing in our community, this gives us the teeth we need to show them that we're serious about keeping them here as well. So I would encourage the rest of the council to take a serious look at this if you haven't already. I think it provides us with the opportunity we've been looking for to move the Missouri Innovation Park into the next phase. We spent a lot of time for years throwing good money after bad and so I don't want to see us make a misstep here. I think we need to be intentional and I think this gives us the opportunity to do that.
Any other comments from council? No other comments from council? Without objection? Yes, which you had.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt the flow here. It's going well. Just to let you know, we have allocated, the council has allocated the funds to do this. You have, so you've reserved it, but at some point in time, should you choose to support this particular scope of work, which has been identified at $41,250, would require at a future council meeting a budget amendment. But you have reserve funds for future development related to Missouri Innovation Park. I just want to be on record with that.
And if I'm not mistaken, the MIP board also approved the resolution supporting it as well as the EDC board. Okay, Councilman Edmondson?
Well, as Mr. Starner has stated, we are on a time crunch here. Is this something that we can bring forward at our next meeting or?
Yeah, that's what I'm commenting to.
Okay, good.
Yeah, with that objection, we'll instruct the council to bring the necessary documents back to our next council member for consideration. Okay, thank you, Mr. Starner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Essman, for having us back. Okay, that brings us to the introduction reading of Bill 4313.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4313, an ordinance approving a final plat for the Parkway, second plat, a replat of part of Lot Two, Parkway West, first plat, lots one through three, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4313, an ordinance approving a final plat for the Parkway, second plat, a replat of part of Lot Two, Parkway West, one, plat lots one through three, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levysey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4486.
That brings us to Merrill announcements. Before we meet again on the 19th, there are a couple of things that I want to make mention of. One is the 13th Annual Blue Springs Police Department Fall and Officers Memorial Service will be on Friday, May 16th, here at the Municipal Annex. And our guest speaker will be Scott Lyons and his dad, Alan, was a Blue Springs police officer. And Scott, right now, is the interim police chief in Lee Summit. So another one of our homegrown young men that we're very proud of. And so if you can make time to put that on your schedule, I encourage you to come. It's always, it's a solemn event, but it's something that you need to attend, you know, when you see the people that loathe their lives for serving others, you know, and I hope it comes to the point of where we don't have to have these. But with the business that they're in, it's inevitable, some things happen. And sometimes it's automobile accidents. If you come, if you've ever been to one of those, you'll see some automobile accidents, not all of them where an officer's been shot or killed by someone. But these are the people that have given the ultimate, paid the ultimate price. And so to come and honor them is a great opportunity for us. If you've never done one, I encourage you to put that on your calendar and come do. Now, on maybe a happier note, on May 15th, the Chamber of Commerce is having at their luncheon Dancing with the Stars. It's going to be on Thursday, May 15th. Now, we have a couple of our people that you know very well that's going to be participating in that. We have our communications manager, Kim Nakahoda, and her partner is Councilman Chris Levysey. And also Sergeant Stacy Edwards from the Police Department will be participating with the partner. And I had the honor of serving as one of the judges last time and I will be serving as judge again, which is quite exciting and interesting. So I'll have to start working on something to comment, something I want to come up with after each one of the dances. So I mean, it's worked for me too to have to go through and come up with those kinds of things. But anyway, we encourage you, if you have an opportunity, come out and participate, at least be able to come out and observe, have a nice luncheon and witness these. I don't know how to describe it. But I can tell you, is Peterman still here? Last year, Michael Peterman and Cindy Miller won it. They won it from the judges as well as winning it from raising the money. So they were double winners on it, I believe, so.
Calling a display of exceptional talent.
Yeah, display of exceptional talent. I like that. So anyway, those are some things I want you to do and next is, it brings me into thoughts to ponder. Change is inevitable, except from a vending machine, end quote. Now, before we adjourn, I want to recognize a dear friend of all of ours, that we're just so happy to have him here tonight. And during the consent agenda, we put him back to work. Former Councilman Grant Byerman officially tonight, he hadn't been sworn in yet, and he'll come in and Kelly or somebody will swear him in. He is now an official member, after the swearing in, of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. So Grant, it's good to have you back with us. I don't have any physical appearance forms, therefore I would accept a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? We adjourn.